Okay. I think it's time to start. Okay. Hello, folks. I want to welcome you to the St. Charles County Council meeting. I'd like to introduce Pastor Brandon Buford of the Lighthouse United Pentecostal Church of in O'Fallon that will do the invocation, and Councilmember Dave Hammond will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please stand.
Good evening, honor. Each of you who serve on the St. Charles County Council, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for still believing in the power of prayer and invoking the presence of God. I pastor the Lighthouse as well as serve as an O'Fallon Police Chaplain, and I'll say to you what I've said to O'Fallon City Council many times: Thank you for not throwing God away. God's Word simply says this in Proverbs, Chapter 4. It says, "Get wisdom; get understanding; forget it not; neither decline the words from my mouth; forsake her not, and she shall preserve thee; love her, and she shall keep thee." Wisdom is the principal thing; therefore, get wisdom, and with all thy getting, get understanding. Would you join me in praying? And Heavenly Father, I thank you that we have these councils that help guide us and usher us in. I pray specifically for the county of St. Charles, the men and women that serve so ably to forward our progress. I pray right now, as they are presented with a litany of decisions and resolutions, that above an economic purpose, above even a sociological purpose, we would simply ask, Lord, how can we direct our city, our county, so that we can do the right thing? I pray, Lord, that every decision that's made here today would be filled with your presence, your wisdom. Ask that you would guide each man, each lady that serves here today, and protect them in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Public Comments section of our meeting. We'll allow speakers to approach the council on any topic. However, once a topic is opened, only six speakers would be allowed with alternating pro and con views. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and please fill out a speaker's card so that we have a record. Okay? Public comments. Is anyone in the office, in the audience here for public comments? Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county council. A.C. Deanoff, county resident. I have two items that I'd like to speak about, and I'll keep them separate. But the first one is on your agenda, and was tabled from last week, and it was concerning Bremelsec Park. We're talking about $5.1 million, and when you do these projects, there's always overruns. I have some real concerns that were discussed by several councilmembers at last meeting. One thing that comes to mind is the lack of supporting documents. When you're talking about such a project of this magnitude and such a large project, you as a county council need to make the diligence and need to have as many and all supporting documents. There should be no secrets, and those should also be disclosed to the general public. What exactly is the $5.1 million going for, is my question. I have never seen a public park project in my life cost $5.1 million. That seems like an exorbitant amount. Even though we use user sales tax fees to run our Parks and Recreation Department and make capital improvement projects, doesn't mean that this county council loses the right or the stewardship of how those county taxpayer dollars are being spent. You have the responsibility to all 400,000 county residents to uphold and make sure that every dollar is spent wisely and with accountability. Although the only sole bidder is a St. Charles County business, there's only one bid that was received, and I have a problem with no competition in such a large public works, public park project. I believe solely in the competitive pricing on any large public works or public park project. I'm asking the county council to throw out this bid of Dominion, even though they're an outstanding contractor, they have a great partnership with the Wentzville School District. I just have a problem with not showing apples to apples of competitive pricing with other contractors on such a large public works project. This council, along with the Parks and Recreation Director and Parks and Recreation Board, needs to make sure that proper full disclosure to the county council and the public is the utmost and the first priority in this bid opening and project at Bremelsec Park. We need full openness of the process and the utmost of transparency, and I feel after hearing the comments from the Parks and Recreation Director and the inquiries from various councilmembers, that that is not the case at this time. Again, you're talking about $5.1 million. This council has a responsibility to each and every county resident to ensure that it's spent in a wise fashion, and I ask that you throw out the bid and that we rebid the project to make sure that we're getting our dollars spent wisely, and there needs to be a lot of questions of why $5.1 million. That's a heavy, heavy load to burden. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this particular subject? Okay, seeing none, other subjects for public comment. Sir, go ahead.
I'm Wayne McDaniel. I live at 1958 Duella Road. It's my understanding that each of you has received a copy of a petition signed by the residents of homes along the south side of Duella Road, having to do with the widening of Duella Road. There is a sense in which this petition is a bit tardy. I'd like to comment on that. Many of the residents were unaware of the county's plan to widen the section of Duella Road that their homes lie along until about two months ago, when the right-of-way specialist came by and let them know what the situation was. And then two or three weeks ago, they became acutely aware of the impact of the plan. Quiver River Electric came through, and if any of you have traveled Duella Road in the past three weeks, you would see that many of the lawns have been quite devastated by the trimming of trees and cutting down of trees along the electric company's right-of-way. They have the right to do this, of course. However, when the county widens the road, then the electric company will have to acquire a new right-of-way deeper into the residents' homes, property. This will mean that they will again clear more trees out. There are many nice homes there with nice landscaping and so forth, and they're going to wind up with homes that they're not nearly so proud of. This is why they've decided that it would be a good idea to approach the county and ask that you reconsider the plan that you have. Twelve years ago, the county approved a plan to straighten Duella Road by going due south from the southwest corner of the Duella Elementary School. You apparently have abandoned that plan after spending over $200,000 having a study made and approving the plan at that time. In fact, that plan is still on your website in the Highways Maintenance section. However, you have decided to abandon that plan. The beauty of the original plan was that it would have moved the traffic away from the many driveways along the southern section of Duella Road. Right now, there's limited sight distance, and I would encourage each of you to go out and drive into some of those driveways. I did that when I took the petition around. When you pull back out on Duella Road, you may be a little bit frightened. Some of the driveways, you really cannot see very far ahead. If you go ahead with this present plan, you will make the road more accessible, there will be more traffic on it, and the traffic will, in fact, probably travel a little faster than it does now. It'll be even more frightening for the people who live in those homes.
Could you wrap it up, sir?
I encourage you to read the eight points which we have in the petition and consider reconsidering your action there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the Duella Road project? Okay, seeing none, any other public comment on any other topic? Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On your tonight's agenda is a bill number 3989, and that's sponsored by Councilman Brazel. Reading it, I testified before the county council for several months, and last time, unfortunately, Governor J. Nixon, in his wisdom, signed into law the Telecommunications Act, which goes into effect on August 28th. At the last county council meeting, I asked the county council to instruct the county councillor, Mr. Ellis, to prepare the necessary paperwork to file an injunction and unconstitutional lawsuit in Circuit Court to overturn the law that was signed into law by the governor. Instead, we're going with a ordinance, which I have several questions for. First of all, as you know, federal government or federal statutes trump state statutes. State statutes trump local county and municipal statutes under the law. So I think we're going to run into some problems there. We're basically asserting, I guess, what the state statute says. Instead of going to court and fighting it there and having it deemed unconstitutional, which our constitution states that local planning and zoning regulations lie in the auspices or the control and leadership of local municipal and county government, we need to fight that unconstitutionality. We need to stop the bully in Jefferson City from taking control of how we zone and regulate our planning programs here in St. Charles County. It's very important that we stand up and stop the bully in Jefferson City and say, enough is enough. It's ironic to me that people or legislators in Jefferson City, including our entire delegation except for Brian Spencer, sold us up the river. But it's ironic that they scream at the federal government and say, "Federal government, keep your nose out of Missouri day-to-day operations and controlling the lives of Missourians." When it comes to the local government, Jefferson City wants to stick their nose in how we run our government, and I think that's wrong, and we need to stand up strongly and stand up with the Missouri Association of Counties and the Missouri Association of County Commissioners and the Missouri Municipal League and the St. Louis County Municipal League and the St. Charles County Municipal League, and we need to foster a partnership to fight this. The proposed ordinance by Mr. Brazel, I have some legal publication times. Unfortunately, state statute and county charter mandate what those publication times are before planning and zoning and public hearings before this county council. I would make sure that we don't assert what those laws say currently to get us some legal ramifications. The timeframe, Mr. Wayne Anthony, the Director of Community Development, has testified on numerous occasions before this county council that it takes a minimum of, I believe, 167 to 169 days to 180 days to put through to fruition before you, the county council, any telecommunication application. So you're lowering the numbers, and you're trying to condense the process. I think we're going to run into some problems. I want to make sure that we don't have a legal contest from outside sources, and what if the P and Z tables an issue or needs additional information, that they do from time to time, or is missing information before making a decision? That's going to put a problem in the entire process and slow it down from getting to the county council. And the last thing is, I believe after reading our county charter, and I think the fairness to the county residents that you represent, that you open up this to a public testimony, our public hearing process, to take public testimony from all those parties affected. I think you need to involve the community, and it needs to go through the public process, the public hearing process. It's not up for second reading until two weeks, but I think there needs to be some revision, but we need to stop the bully in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Any other comments on bill number 3989? Okay, seeing none, any other public comments? Okay. We will move on. Next on our agenda is the oral report from the county executive.
Oral report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Next is the consideration of the consent agenda. Okay. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. If there's none, we need a motion.
Will you approve?
Second.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. Next on the list, of course, is the item that was removed last week, or actually, three weeks ago, from the consent agenda, and that is the bid for the Parks and Recreation for Bremelsec Park Phase III. So I will entertain comments. Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the Parks Department staff, specifically Mr. DeYoung, for helping us, myself and Dave Hammond, understand this process and what they're doing. Majority of this bid was road construction, and they were kind enough to get the details over to Mr. Tchakowski, and Craig, I would like to thank him as well for going through all the numbers and seeing that the actual costs of the road projects were within line with what we're paying elsewhere. In fact, a lot of the numbers were actually real good numbers compared to what we're paying elsewhere in county, and it was nice of him to do that with the staff. And then Councilman Hammond, with his experience, looked at the plans real extensively and got some numbers together for the renovation of the old house per square foot, and I think Mr. Hammond could probably go over that. And then if the Parks folks that all showed up, want to explain to the council where the $5 million going up might be helpful to the people watching this.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, I visited the site, and I spoke with several people, and what I'd like to do with, if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to bring up one of the consultant and also somebody from Demeen to go over some of the items we came up with specifically on the Jack's House. Since all that was lumped together, it wasn't real clear on how much we were spending on that building. It's my understanding, and it's somewhere around $100 a square foot for a 4,000-square-foot building, which is more in line with what I would think, and if they would mind come up and touch base on a few of those numbers, I'd appreciate it.
Come on up, folks. That's a good way to do it.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, gentlemen, to explain this further. I did ask some members of the team to come along this evening. Dennis DeYoung, who's the Assistant Director for the Parks and Recreation Department, and he did meet Mr. Hammond and Mr. Cronin out on site with Jack's House in particular. We also have Larry Jordan tonight from Demeen Construction, that if you have any questions or any points about that that you'd like to address with him. And then also, we have Gary Perkins, who is our consultant from Planning Design Studio. They're the design consultants, engineering consultants, that actually put the specs and plans together. And excuse me, because I'm fighting this summer thing that I did not get all winter long, but I got it this week, so. But I think if you don't mind, just a reminder, this is our second-largest park that's within the system, and this would complete the phases of construction that we had planned for this. Mr. Bremelsec did have a life estate right in the center of the park area, so that really delayed this full construction. But at this time, this will complete the park, and a main emphasis with it is Jack's House. That is a very unique, very attractive structure. It really fits into the park setting very, very nicely. And with that, I'm going to let Gary address the cost, particularly the square foot cost, and start with that, and then if you have any other questions, we'll go from there. Thank you. Gary?
Would anyone be interested in a brief overview of the park? Are you familiar enough with what we're doing in Phase III in terms of the overall components? If not, I'll go straight to the square foot numbers on the resident.
I think we've had the overview. You can go right to the.
Okay. The last information that Councilman Hammond got, the total cost of the house, the way that it was broken out, and the information requested from Demeen, also included some improvements to the patio as well as the deck and the front courtyard that needs some rework to make ADA accessible and the paving and that. And that total number came in and also included the general conditions and overhead and profit and all of those items. So when that was pulled out, that's around $710,000 per square feet. The house is at $4,000, and then those side improvements add another approximately 3,100 square feet. So when you take.
I don't think you meant those numbers the way you said those, did you?
Pardon?
You said that wrong. It's $136 a square foot. You said $710,000 a square foot.
Well, I didn't mean square, but I apologize. No, that's the total. That's the total wall of wax. That calculates out to about $97.50 a square foot. Now, when you take out just what's going on within the envelope of the house, that's the $136, and it's $546,910. So that 136 square foot cost to renovate a sound existing structure with a character you've got, to build something new with a similar character is going to cost you at least that much, $125,000 to $150,000. So as we looked at the bid, realizing that there was only one, we analyzed it in detail as well to see if it made sense, and it did. At the 136, that's well within what you would expect for a building that has to be designed for commercial occupancy, the way this is going to be used, satisfy all the codes, et cetera. So we feel it's a good number.
Mr. Chairman? Any questions? No. Okay. Mr. Cronin? Okay. Anyone else?
Jeff Mike?
Yep. The questions I had on this really had less to do with the projects that were being done within the park itself as compared to the process of packaging everything together in one package and going to market or going to bid with everything wrapped in. And I think that's the part that gave me the most indigestion was not what we were doing in the park. All the components of the park were, are good and well thought out, and I absolutely applaud the many, many, many hours that went into the planning process. But taking that many different components of road work, remodeling work to the house, drilling wells, the entrance ways, I just don't think that we got the best price by doing it in one package as compared to letting construction companies that specialize in road projects go ahead and build the roads. There's, in my opinion, very little that ties the road into the house structure in particular. Two different animals, two different types of contractors that could bid on that, and by packaging it together, you have just another layer of management and therefore profit margin that goes to one company rather than going and getting more competition on it. Well, we end up with one company that bid on it. That, to me, says that it was too big and too complex of a project for multiple bidders to participate in. That's what I have concerns about. Not what we're doing with the money, not whether or not it was the best idea to rehab a house or to tear it down and build a new one. That, I trust everybody to make the right decision on that, but it has to do with packaging it together in unrelated fields so that it's really a conglomeration of a bunch of smaller projects together.
Actually, if you don't mind, I can respond to that. And Planning Design Studio, as well as other firms that do a lot of parks and recreation work, we've done projects both ways. We just recently completed a project in O'Fallon, Illinois, that was $10 million, Phase III project, and they chose to do that. What you have to add, if you break it down into just subcontractor packages, you end up having to then have a construction manager to solicit those individual bids and manage the construction work. And in the end game, when you come back around, that versus lump sum is almost a wash in cost, and.
We'll never really know that because we never, we didn't test the market to see.
But we have, over our multiple years of experience, done it both ways, and that's how the result. We end up seeing, as a rule, anywhere a plus or minus 10% is a bid range you normally get, whether it's lump sum or unit price on estimates. And this bid is actually, with the alternates recommended, is 9.7% below. Their base bid was 6% below, so it's in the bottom range of what we would normally expect with multiple bidders submitting bids. And we took that into consideration, too, as we made our recommendation to the Parks Department, that these numbers, even though we got one bid, appear to be within what we've seen over the years and years of history. And just for a history and context, when we did Phase I Bremelsec, that was in '04. We had several bids on that project, and its equivalent amount of work, including the astronomy, we were at about $4.5 million on that project in '04, and it had a maintenance building. So again, we look back at that, and for this many years later, the 5.1 with those alternates still seems to be in the same reality as the numbers were back in '04. That's the best way I can answer that. I do appreciate your concern, but we have done that both ways many, many times.
Mr. Ben?
I normally would be concerned if there's one bid. However, the general contractor didn't know there was going to be one bid, so he bid it competitively, so that's why I'm not concerned about that. And from what I understand, there actually was another bid.
There was, one bid was like a minute late, and so we had to turn it away.
Right, right. So.
And they did not question anything?
It was because it was higher than their bid.
It probably was, but we have no way of knowing that.
If it was lower, they would have said something. On one minute, because there's no point arguing at the time.
One would suspect that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? Yes.
Yeah, I understand and realize that your company is well-known for getting very close in the ballpark on the estimates that you prepare, and this project was close to $200,000 under your estimate. And I would like to thank our county engineer for taking the time and going through the numbers, because I don't even think he's got anything on the agenda tonight, but I appreciate you taking that time to do that and letting us know the numbers are well within reason.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes. Mr. Cronin?
You know, with what Mike was alluding to, with, you know, dealing with a bunch of different subcontracts to get a project like this done, it would take active construction management. That being said, with the parks projects that are coming up in the future, maybe it's time to think about a construction management person within the Parks Department. I'm not suggesting that. That's Mr. Elman's decision, but at the same token, is I know you've got a lot of parks to develop, and I know all those things have to be coordinated. You know, you can't do this without doing that. But I mean, if Mike feels strongly about that, that's another alternative to approach down the road.
County Executive, please.
Yeah. Took the words right out of my mouth. Just some history on this. I think the first year that I was the county executive, of course, we had very serious budget problems, and we had had a construction manager, Mr. Brazel, you know, going back, I don't know how long, and for many years, we were building so many things, it made a lot of sense to have that construction manager. But the last year or two, you know, we weren't building things. We didn't feel like he was, you know, necessary at that time. We felt that the building department could, you know, take care of the smaller projects we had at that time. And I think if you want to have a discussion about this at budget time, as to what to do next year. year, I think that'd be very, very useful, determine whether we want to keep doing it this way or go back and do it the way we used to. But I just want to make sure that you understand that I certainly would support whatever you decide and would like to be part of that discussion, but, you know, we can decide how to do it next time. But, you know, I hate to see, you know, Mr. Demean did submit the bid. He did everything we asked him to do. So unless you just feel very strongly about it, I'd ask you to support this matter.
And I agree with Steve, but it's already happened. It's post. I in no way want to punish the winning bidder for, you know, turning in, doing his homework. And we certainly don't want to open it up now. It's after the fact.
Well, I think you've answered all the right questions. And again, we have done it that way in the past. We've been doing it this way the last few years, mainly to save the salary of a construction manager. But in the future, we'll be talking to you about how you'd like to see us do this.
Sounds good. Thank you.
On the history with that, Steve, you're right. When we had the construction manager, what started happening is the construction manager, we were hiring general contractors anyway. And then the question was, is why do we have a construction manager when we're hiring general contractors? And then it's slow, and then we're paying somebody $100,000 a year for not doing anything. So I mean, it goes both ways, you know? So.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I just, you know, before we conclude and vote, which I think, you know, will, obviously, I think the process worked well here. We had several councilmen that, you know, needed some answers, and our Parks Department and you folks did a great job with other county officials getting those answers, and I think everybody's satisfied that they got the information they need, and that's what the process is designed for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will, I will need a motion to approve the item that was removed, the consent agenda, which was Parks and Recreation, Bromosick Park, Phase Three Construction.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 13-08.
Resolution 13-08, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution reappointing Tom Kessler to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Whereas pursuant to the St. Charles County Charter, Article 10, Section 10.608, 2012, the County Council passed Resolution 02-09, establishing a Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District, and appointing three residents of the district, namely Leonard Nadler, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff, as its first members for the terms stated herein. And whereas by Resolutions 04-09, 06-03, 06-08, 07-10, 08-13, 09-08, 10-11, 11-08, and 12-08, the County Council has since reappointed or appointed district residents to the board, and its current members are Ron Beerbaum, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff. And whereas because Tom Kessler's term expires on August 25, 2013, the Council seeks to reappoint him to a new three-year term beginning August 26, 2013. Now therefore be resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council makes the following appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Tom Kessler to a three-year term beginning August 26, 2013.
Okay. Any questions or comments upon, on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
A resolution reappointing Tom Kessler to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottoms Drainage District. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 13-08 passes. Next is Resolution Number 13-09.
Resolution 13-09, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution urging Missouri's State Board of Education to appoint special administrative boards for unaccredited districts immediately upon classifying them as unaccredited in order to place them promptly upon paths to recovery, and further urging the Board and Missouri's General Assembly to promulgate regulations and/or adopt legislation providing for the equitable and efficient implementation of transfer and transportation programs for the benefit of students in unaccredited districts and the accredited districts to which they transfer.
Okay. Questions or comments on Resolution 13-09?
I have a comment. Just want to explain to everybody why I did this, and I talked to Steve about this, too, and I appreciate Steve taking a stance on this. And we know we have nothing to do with this, and I understand that. And the reason why I'm putting a resolution out there is because I'm sure you guys got a lot of phone calls on this, and every time you run into somebody, they say something to you, and even people that don't understand it. How could you let this happen? And hey, we have nothing to do with it. But, and I just want to urge that point across there. But, you know, just a couple of comments. So for the record, that's why I want to do this resolution. And of course, resolutions really do nothing. I understand that, but I just wanted to state my position, and I hope the council agrees and votes in favor of it. Just a couple of comments. This whole situation is a bad situation, and I do largely represent Francis Howell School District is in my district. And I just, I have a problem with a couple of things, but the children that are on both sides, putting children on the bus for an hour and a half is a bad idea. I have a belief that possibly that the superintendent of that district is putting the children on the bus to drive that far so they don't choose to come to Francis Howell because it's so far, because he wants to save his tax dollars. The other thing I can't understand is why an incompetent superintendent and an incompetent school board is still making incompetent decisions. I don't get that. That's just illogical to me. So I just wanted to state for the record that I think this whole thing is a bad deal. It hurts the kids. And I think what Steve did is the right thing to do, stand up and say, we want the State Board of Education to do something about this and not let this continue to happen. And if the legislators can do something about it, they should. Again, our hands are tied. We can't do anything about it, but I think it's important that we make a public position on it.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to know Mr. Elman's position on this specific resolution with your experience, Steve, in the legislature. I would like to know, you know, what you think about this specific resolution, is the best way to handle it?
Yeah, I think this resolution is fine. Like Joe suggested, we have no guarantee anybody's going to read it, much less pay attention to it. But, you know, it is rather frustrating because, as Joe suggested, and he's absolutely right, under our charter, the Constitution specifically prohibits us from doing anything that in any way affects the schools. But we also have a more general duty, I think, here to do what's good for this county. And all of us know that one of the keys to our success in this county has been safe neighborhoods, and in this case, what's really important is good schools. And, you know, I just hope this whole thing can pass without affecting our kids that are there already. And I know that the school district's doing everything it can to make sure that happens. But we all know, as Joe suggested, this was a very cynical thing that the Normandy School Board did. And it's all that we really, as citizens, can do, is to ask our State Board of Education to do something about it. And they had the opportunity to appoint a special board for the St. Louis problem 15 years ago and waited till five years ago to actually do it. Now, since they did that, St. Louis has gone from non-accredited to provisionally accredited, and they still got a lot of problems, but they're at least making success. I just think it would be silly at this point to let the same folks who've been running that school district continue to run it because they've had many chances to improve things over there, and they just have not. So, you know, it's not going to be magical to appoint this special board, but I think if you look at the case of the city schools, it has been, it has worked there. I think it can work here. And again, that's about all we can do. We're doing this mainly as interested individuals, and I'm certainly going to continue to put pressure on the school board to at least get the process started, have the hearings, give Normandy its due process. If they can come in and make a case why they should continue to run the place, that's fine. I don't think they're going to be able to do that, though.
Yes.
I would commend you, Joe, for putting this together, because I know we've all gotten tons of emails on this. And you do run into people all over the time, all over the place, who keep saying, why can't you guys do something? So at least, one of the guys that I email back and forth with, who's emailed all of us quite a bit, said, I just wanted to know that somebody's listening and somebody's paying attention and somebody's being responsive. So even though our hands are tied on this, and practically, there's really nothing we can do, at least people should understand that we agree with you. So when you're complaining about this, we understand, and hopefully this shows them a little bit to direct your information to the right place. Because I'm just as frustrated as anybody else on this, and I wish there was something more that we could do.
Yes.
Adding to that, I mean, again, it's cynical, the fact that they chose a district where the, I'm really interested to see the bus routes once they're announced after the first. I'm thinking to go to some of those schools out in your part of the world, Joe, it's going to be a two-hour bus ride. So obviously, that's not in the best interest of those kids.
Not at all.
When this Supreme Court decision came down on June the 11th, I didn't hear anybody in St. Charles County complain about the fact that we would be taking our fair share of kids, whether that's 10 or 20 or 30. You know, in a large school district, they can be accommodated. But when you start talking about 300 or more, Mr. Hollander can tell you, give you some better examples than anybody about what kind of difficult situation that's going to create, not just for the kids that are there, but the kids coming out. So it's not a good, it's not a good situation.
And I think we would all agree that, you know, once you set aside, you know, the point that we all agree on, that every child deserves a chance for a good education, okay, once we get beyond that point, everything else about this decision doesn't make a whole lot of sense, or, you know, it just doesn't make either side, I think, you know, very happy, the people that are in the affected school districts that have been unaccredited, and obviously, the folks in Francis Howell School District who are, you know, going to be affected. So, any other comments? Okay, we will then vote on Resolution 13-9.
A resolution urging Missouri's State Board of Education to appoint special administrative boards for unaccredited districts immediately upon classifying them as unaccredited in order to place them properly upon paths to recovery, and further urging the Board and Missouri's General Assembly to promulgate regulations and/or adopt legislation providing for the equitable and efficient implementation of transfer and transportation programs for the benefit of students in unaccredited districts and the accredited districts to which they transfer. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 13-09 passes, and hopefully it will be read and considered by the people that, you know, need to consider it. Okay, next is bills for final passage. We begin with Bill Number 3986.
Bill Number 3986, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of McCoy Creek Estates Plat 2.
Okay. Questions or comments on Bill 3986? Okay, seeing none, we will call the roll.
An ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of McCoy Creek Estates Plat 2. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 3986 passes. Next bill for final passage is Bill 3987.
Bill Number 3987, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 18883 for the extraction of topsoil to Karen Brock Farms LLC.
Yes, Mr. Crowell?
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask Mr. Anthony to come up and explain that there's also a substitute bill and what the substitute bill does, because I believe what's on the screen is the original bill.
Correct. You have the substitute laying on there.
Yeah, we have a substitute here. Would you like to, should we go ahead and introduce that substitute?
You would have to amend the current bill 3987 and replace it with substitute bill 3987.
Do I have a motion to do that?
Do we want to discuss it?
Yeah, let's go ahead, Wayne.
Discuss with Wayne what the differences are?
Yes. Okay.
I'd like to punt to Harold.
Okay. Yes.
Harold being the punt receiver is now in motion.
Good evening. After discussions with Mr. Cronin and learning a bit about his concerns, principally for the well-being of the Peruk Creek Water Course and the watershed it serves, I developed some strategies to at least strengthen the already existing tools the county has for that purpose. Namely, I have added, I've recommended that we might add as a condition to this conditional use permit, one additional condition. A condition that the permittee, when he embarks on his project, comply with all the requirements of Chapter 412 of the UDO. Chapter 412 of the UDO is the land disturbance regulation, regulations of the UDO, which require that people who disturb more than 5,000 square feet of land use sediment and erosion control measures, submit a plan, get them permitted, inspect on an ongoing basis for the purpose of making sure that soil on the property isn't washed off of it and does not silt water courses off premises. The whole point is to prevent the degradation of water courses and stormwater systems elsewhere in the county. Given the proximity of this site to Peruk Creek, I suggested that that might be an addition to this CUP that would make sense as a condition of the CUP. It does not add to the permittee's legal obligations any new burdens. That permittee is already obliged to comply with Chapter 412. However, failure to comply with Chapter 412 then exposes the permittee or whoever would be violating that provision not only to sanctions under 412, but also to liability under violations of the UDO and legitimate and proper orders under it, like a CUP permit. So it just increases risks or liabilities for violation. But we've already got the tools to address the concerns that Mr. Cronin addressed, and we wanted to make them appear on the face of this permit.
Mr. Crowell?
I did not want to put any additional regulations on Mr. Karen Brock. I realize it's tough enough to make a living in this world now. But also, at the same time, I did talk to Wayne Anthony's person who's in charge of erosion and sediment control, and they said the existing laws that we have are adequate. Then I went to Harold, and if they were enforced, I went to Harold and said, okay, Harold, can we make sure that they're enforced with the CUP? And that's what Harold did. I think it's also important to note that Peruk Creek, for those that aren't aware of it, is the creek that feeds Lake St. Louis. This is just a couple miles upstream from Lake St. Louis. And Lake St. Louis, I talked to their mayor today, they spent a million dollars last year removing sediment out of that lake. So knowing that Wayne's man will do a good job making sure sediment stays out of that creek, knowing that Mr. Karen Brock is a good landowner, knowing that there's no additional regulations, I think the substitute's a good way to make sure that laws are complied with, and I think that existing laws will solve the problem and keep the, I shouldn't say solve the problem, keep the problem from happening.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Klinghammer?
I had just one. And again, I've never been to this part of the county, so please forgive my ignorance, but the, striking out paragraph five seems that that is the strongest one about keeping dirt out of the soil, out of the...
It's back in there like at eight, I think. Yeah, it's back, that same paragraph. I found that, too.
Okay.
It's back in there.
I should explain that I slightly rearranged the order of conditions, but I, and I did that basically so...
I guess I should have continued reading. I just saw that part got struck out, and I'm like, well, that looks like the strongest paragraph.
and I'm like, "Well, that, that looks like the strongest paragraph." All right, thank you.
Might I ask, I think there was a question last time about the, the amount of setback, and I think we, we kind of discussed 50 feet is normal, and we, somebody brought up the possibility of, of 100. Does this substitute bill keep it at 50? Is that correct?
It keeps it at 50, as it consistently with the requirements of, the existing requirements of the UDO.
Okay.
It should be noted, though, I think, that Lake St. Louis and Wentzville are at 100, okay? But I don't think it's fair to Mr. Karen Brock to go to 100, since he's already done the engineering for this. So, all we're doing is taking the existing regulation, and I think Harold packaged them well, to make sure that they're, that the regulations apply, with no new regulations to Mr. Karen Brock, if I understand the process.
Ms. Brazel.
Mr. Daniels. Did you read the substitute bill, and do you have any concerns or issues with it?
No, I didn't. I, I did, I do not have any concerns, and Harold did help explain a little better. We're not any, any new provisions. I guess we've just restated best management practices is what we've basically done. And we agree to comply with best management practices, and not put any silt in Peruk Creek. St. Charles County is one avenue, but we don't want DNR on our case either. So, that's, we're definitely vigilant to those, those things. But no, we find it, it's okay the way it's written.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to replace Bill 3987 with substitute Bill 3987.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay. It has been, a motion is made in second, and to replace substitute to Bill 3987 with substitute Bill 3987. Do we need a...
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will now vote on the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 3987, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 18883 for the extraction of topsoil to Karen Brock Farms LLC. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 3987 passes, and again, I'd, before we, like to commend the, the parties involved here, Mr. Karen Brock, and especially, Mr. Cronin, to, you know, making things work out. Appreciate it. Okay, next is Bill Number 3988.
Bill Number 3988, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district, as per application 18895.
Questions or comments on Bill 3988? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR, single-family residential district, as per application 18895. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes. Okay, Bill Number 3988 passes, and next up is bills for introduction, and there's one bill, Bill Number 3989.
Bill Number 3989, requested by Jill Brazel, sponsored by Jill Brazel, an ordinance amending Section 405.505 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, relating to telecommunication facilities and towers, and amending Section 405.510 by OSC CMO, relating to applications for conditional use permits.
Okay, Mr. Brazel, would you...
Yeah, Harold, could you come up here for a moment, please? Harold and I, we've been talking about this for, ever since this was brought up at Jeff City, and we're trying to figure out a way, we were waiting to see if it was going to be signed by the governor. And so, Harold did a lot of work on this, and I guess he can explain it better than me, on, it's, it's the time constraints is what we have to fulfill, to go back to having public hearings and, and public comment, and be able to decide whether or not, you know, to give your people representation in your district. And so that's, we had to squeeze everything down into 120 days, where Wayne is right, it might have typically took 160, without any tabling or out of any problems. But this is, we just got to push it all together, and Harold did all that. And, you know, there's just some funny things about this bill, is, is, they could technically come down to the county, and give you a, put their name on it, say they want a 200-foot tower, and sign it, and not give you any paperwork. And according to state law, and Harold's going to address this, that that's, that's when the time starts. But, and I guess you can maybe correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but we've kind of massaged that a little bit, where we're saying that there's only a certain day they can submit it, and it has to be a complete application. Because you can't, it's not fair to the county staff to submit an application, and it be half-fulfilled, and then that starts to time, you know? So...
In addition to what Joe said, the statute, the new statute, also has a lot of prohibitions. Many of them were perhaps justifiable. Some of them were matters of policy that really served the industry better than they may serve local government. In any case, I also sought in this draft to make sure that our regulations are consistent with those prohibitions, and you will see in the bill that some of the provisions in our existing regulations had to be struck, to align our regulations with the new law. I agree, though, that the principal task before us is to make sure that we can receive and process applications within a much stricter deadline than we ever had to meet before. The Federal Telecommunications Act provides that we have to act within 150 days. And even that is not really a provision of the Act, so much as a provision of the FCC in an advisory ruling that was upheld by federal courts in litigation that only concluded a few months ago with a Supreme Court decision. The FCC's regs are more generous, and furthermore, they're more flexible, because the statute provides that we must act within a reasonable time, and the courts, and indeed the FCC itself, have said that the FCC's own 150-day ruling is a guideline, and it can be massaged or adjusted by the courts for good cause shown. Missouri's legislature has written a much stricter guideline, and for that reason, we have to write very strict requirements into our own application filing and processing regulations, to make sure that we do everything we can to stay within the 120-day clock, and give every application the complete review it requires, and as well, give the PNC Commission, the council, and the public, every opportunity that they currently have to contribute to, to the discussion of the proposed permit. So that, in a nutshell, is what we tried to do in this draft. Squeeze the process, particularly in the end, on pages 10 and after of the bill, is where you will see the gatekeeping provisions of this bill, for, that will regulate when we will accept applications, what, how quickly, what exactly constitutes a complete application. We actually have a checklist in here now, to give clear notice to industry applicants, and also to staff, of, as to what they require. We have, in addition, a requirement that they give us email contact, so that we can immediately notice, notify them of, of any deficiency. We immediately set measures for hearing by the PNC Commission, but in the case of a deficient application, those settings are provisional. We get, and we state here that if you fail to complete your application, seven, the seventh day prior to the PNC Commission, that shall be deemed a request for continuance. We also have provisions here, which provide that requests for continuance can be requested, but we, we grant them in 30-day increments. The whole point is to manage the traffic so that, and the timing of submissions, or supplementary submissions, so that we are always in step with our own month-by-month process. First, to the PNC Commission, then to this body. And remember, too, that we have to build in three trips, possibly, to this body, since you have, not only do you consider an ordinance, but you may have to do findings and conclusions when you deny a permit. So we're trying to squeeze as much as we can into the very, into the diminished time given us by the legislature. We've, we've done the best we can, and we, and we, I recommend that you consider this.
Well... Yes, Mr. Hammond first.
Let's see, I don't have a problem being more efficient in processing application. I think that's great, and I, I think the county, with its fine employees, can adapt to that. But let's say, let's go through, we go through this process, and we find an application is not in compliance with our ordinance. Can we deny him a permit?
Yes. Yes, if it is not in deny, i- in compliance with our ordinance, we can deny. There are more complicated questions that might arise, however, under the Federal Telecommunications Act, which provides that denial cannot have the effect or purpose of depriving an applicant of the ability to provide service and coverage. That is a requirement of the Telecom Act that we have to be cognizant of. But we have provisions in our own regulations for formerly variances, now adjustments or waivers to certain requirements. I failed to mention a moment ago that we no longer go, under this regulation, we would no longer go to the, an applicant would no longer go to the BZA, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, at the same time that he's going to the PNC Commission, to the commission to get a CUP, a permit, and to the board to get a variance from a spacing requirement. All of that is one-stop shopping now, and all of that will be done, would be done, under this bill, before the commission. But we need, the funny thing about Missouri's law, Missouri's new law, and this, this is getting us close to one of the problems in this new law, that I'm sure other jurisdictions are going to face, too. Under the federal law, we cannot deny an application if we effectively deny a provider of telecommunications service, the possibility of providing it, of closing coverage gaps. This law deprives us of the, the right to demand that information. The result is that in this draft, we say, you, you know, if you want a variance, or an adjustment, or a waiver of a certain spacing requirement, they will only grant it, the commission can only grant it, and the council can only grant it, for good cause stated and shown. And they then will have to come forward with a statement of, of cause, and documentation, or a showing of why they are entitled to an adjustment. We can't require them to provide technical information about customer service expressly upfront, but they may have to, if they want to get a waiver, or they may be able to do so on other theories.
Ms. Cronin?
Harold, in short, okay, basically, you're trying to make this as much subject to local control as possible, given the circumstances it's put.
This, I, I, the, the marching orders I was given by Mr. Brazel was to preserve the, the county's ability, and the public's ability to review CUP applications, and for the public to participate in them at open meetings.
Okay. I'm very supportive of this. I would like my name put on this bill with Mr. Brazel's consent. With one thing, I would like to exempt the piece of land directly behind Representative Thunder Burke's house, okay? Um, Harold, so, in short, if we do nothing, I just want to make this clear, if we do nothing, and we follow the, someone fills out the process, and it doesn't make it to the second reading, or whatever, after that timeframe, it automatically goes through, right?
By operation of state law.
Yeah, so, that's, just so you, you understand, that we, that what they did is they just took our whole process, and said, you know, "This is how you're going to do it." Or, no, "This is how we're going to do it. You guys either file suit, or you don't get a say," you know, so. And I think, Harold, you did a good job. I appreciate you putting this together. I know it took a lot of time, but...
Thank you.
Other questions? I think, yes, Mr. Hammond?
This is probably something you can't answer tonight, but I, I would be interested to know if, if, if we did file suit against the state in an injunction, if there's any possibilities that we could win that, that battle.
That is a legal opinion that I should give you in confidence.
And just for, out there, if you guys want your name on it, you can call the secretary. The more names on it, the better. It's up to you guys. I don't want to put you on the spot, you know?
Sure.
Any other comments? So, Harold, one last thing. I think basically, what we're saying here is, if, if we, you know, pass this, and we get the condensed period of time, that we can keep the same powers for county government and the public as we've had in the past.
If we can keep to this timeframe, and the timeframe is adjustable in some ways. We have managed, we are trying to adjust the timeframe by having some control on when the clock starts ticking. The statute itself is asymmetrical in one respect. It allows applicants to file incomplete applications, and then gives them 30 days from our giving them notice to complete it. However, we don't get that 30 days. Our 100-day, 20 days remains the same. However, after that first 30 days, there are, both sides can get the benefit of continuances. And so we are not, once, once we're past that first threshold, we can move forward together on the same terms. And it might be that in certain cases, both the applicant and the county staff will want the additional time, and that can be arranged under this bill.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
May I ask Harold a question?
Sure.
I'm confused now, too, because I thought, even if we're within the timeframes set out in the state statute, we still have less discretion than we had before.
And that was my, that's true.
Okay, so the answer to Mr. Hollander's question is no. We haven't, we haven't maintained, we've, we've been squeezed on the time, and we've also been squeezed on the amount of discretion we have to deny a permit.
The powers, there are certain prohibitions in the state law that are reflected in this bill by what you see in the, in the stricken language in our existing regulations. To the extent that the, the new statute requires that those provisions be stricken, our powers are limited. But otherwise, we're trying to preserve the powers we have to run our process before the commission and the council, with public participation, as we always have.
Ms. Cronin?
Not an attorney, but I'm just asking a question. Were the, the state law is directly aimed for telecommunication laws, okay? What if the council passed a vague law that stated there was a different permit process for any type of structure over X amount of feet? Now, there's any structure over 200 feet, or 100 feet, okay? Is there a way to circumvent that, that Senate bill, and get that around that way, Harold?
That is a question...
I'd probably like to answer that question to you in an email, if that'd be more appropriate.
We may want to reword that question, too, just saying.
We shall talk about that.
Okay. Any other comments on this particular bill? Again, this is the, the first, first reading, and we will take it up again two weeks from now. Okay, any other announcements? Any other, yes, Ms. Cronin?
I think the sheriff and the health department are having an open house regarding the new tracking system. I saw an email come through, and Joanne might know, I think it's...
Kelly, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Yes, on Friday, we're actually doing a Media Day demonstration at the Community Health and the Environment, a little presentation to the media, to show them what the equipment is all about, and how it works. And Sheriff's Department and Department of Community Health and the Environment staff will be there. And then, as of Monday, the health department will start accepting applications for the program.
I think it's a great program. There, I saw the police helicopter circling over my house a couple weeks ago, and I'm in a community, an elderly fellow that was affected by Alzheimer's had wandered off a second time. So this is a great program for families that have those situations. It'd be great the public knows about.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to just mention what CareTrack is and what you're referring to? Yes, CareTrack, it's a telemetry tracking system that the sheriff's department has purchased, and they're working in cooperation with the Department of Community Health and the Environment to launch this program. And basically what it is, it almost looks like a watch that a person wears, and it's for people with special needs that have a medical diagnosis that may cause them to wander away or become lost or disoriented, such as Alzheimer's and certain developmental disabilities. Their, families and caregivers can purchase the system, which includes the risk transmitter device and also a battery checking system. And every other month, they have to come to the Department of Community Health and the Environment with a battery checking log, and, you know, they can get new batteries every two months. And what it allows is if they happen to wander off or become lost, the sheriff's department can then, they have like a telemetry tracking system that's basically, almost looks like a, a big antenna that they can program with the code that's uniquely programmed into these risk transmitter devices to help find that individual within a mile on the ground and five miles in the air. So this is the first system. In Missouri, on this, in the St. Louis area, will be the first ones to have it, so it's a pretty, pretty good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So will I.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.